All right, welcome everyone. Called order the meeting of the Bath Charter Township Planning Commission is June 29th, 2021. So let's start with a roll call and disclosure of virtual attendance. So you Nick?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Baker.
Hey, office, Bath Township.
Fewons Bliss.
Here at my home in Bath Township.
Joel Gutsky.
I am present in Southern Michigan by mobile.
Kramer.
Yep, here attending from my home in Bath.
And John just got here, we'll give him, John, are you here, can you hear us?
Hey, I can hear you.
All right.
I'm at my house in Bath Township.
Okay, you got your internet back at home, that's exciting.
Yes, I do, thank you. Temporarily anyhow.
All right, well, if he disappear, we know why.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thanks Nick. Okay, so we have an agenda. For those of you that are tuning in, you can get that agenda on the Bath website. Are there any changes to the agenda additions? Not seeing any, so if not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed?
I make motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
All right.
I'll spark.
We got support, support by Joel, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And pose the same sign. Okay, and the motion carries, the agenda has been approved. This is an opportunity to disclose any conflict of interest that planning commissioners may have with any item on the agenda, any conflicts of interest tonight? All right, not seeing any, so let's move on to general public comment, so this is the first two opportunities for the public to address the planning commission, would anyone like to do so at this time?
If so, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine or raising your physical hand if you have your video turned on or using the zoom hand function. Ray?
Ray. I, I just want to say thank you very much for having me and can't say as I've ever done this, made a presentation on Zoom. I've attended quite a few meetings, but I really don't know where to start if, I just wanted to ask a question, do you have, do all the members of the planning commission have a copy of the CIP that I'm going to make a presentation on? Do I just outline the, the highlights of it or just read it verbatim?
I would just summarize, you know, what it is you want to do. The, the application was in the packet, so all the planning commissioners had the opportunity to go over it.
Yes.
And then just be here to answer questions if commissioners have any questions.
Oh, definitely, thank you, yep.
Will be great. Anyone else would like to address the planning commission at this time? Yeah, Ray.
I had one other question. In regard to the, in regards to the cousins CIP. Is there a public comment on that or like a Ray comment on that?
Yeah, you can take the opportunity right now if you'd like, yeah.
Well, I just wanted, yeah. I just wanted to say quite some time ago, Ryan might remember this too. When I was on parks, in fact, we, this must have been like 2012 or somewhere back in there, but we attempted to contact our representative in, in the house and try to get some federal aid to get some kind of a shelter made for that gazebo or the cupola. And it just never came to fruition, so I just wondered if there was anything, you know, that, that the DDA had with that or the cousins CIP initiator had done with that. So there you go, that was it.
Thanks, Rick, Nick, you have any, any thoughts on that or any?
I don't have anything to contribute to that question, no.
Okay. Anyone else know of any initiatives by folks in Bath to try to find support for Park? Okay. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, not seeing any, so let's move on, the next agenda item is the minutes, so approval of the minutes of June 8th, 2021. So any changes to those minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thanks, John.
I'll spark.
Support by George, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And oppose the same sign. All right, so those minutes for June 8th have been approved. Nick, do you have any communications for us?
I do not.
Okay, moving along here, so we don't have any old business, so that takes us to the first item under new business, which is the public hearing for extra space storage, so let me open the public hearing at this time. So we can start maybe with Nick, if you've got some summary comments you want to offer, and then the applicant is here, Jeff, and so Jeff can have an opportunity to address the planning commission and address any questions, and then we will move to public comment if there is any. So Nick?
Okay, thank you. As you'll see in the packet, I included a staff report for this. Nice new shiny layout for the staff report too. Any feedback on that is much appreciated. In summary, I have not seen any comments from reviewing agencies that raise any significant concerns. The only real notable comment was related to stormwater drainage and that all of the drain, or the drainage from this project will ultimately end up in the Mud Creek County drain, but that it has to cross M dot right of way to get there. Based on my understanding of the proposed layout of the project, that would be primarily the stormwater runoff that does not end up in one of the two retention ponds onsite. And so, you know, with it potentially crossing M dot right of way, they may need to get a stormwater permit from M dot. Aside from that, there were no any, no other comments that were of any significant concern. And as you'll find on the last page of the staff report, recommending approval with the conditions that are outlined.
Okay, thanks Nick, and I know the township engineer, and I think this is just kind of boilerplate communications to you, but making sure that those parking is in compliance with our ordinance and the lot coverage requirements are also fine for this project, have you checked those and we're okay?
They are, I'm assuming that he, the township engineer may have been under the impression that lot coverage included all impervious surface, as you all know, at this time it does not, it's solely structures. But from that standpoint, we do not have a lot coverage issue.
Okay. Okay, great. So the applicant is here, so let's give Jeff an opportunity to address the planning commission, and we may come back to you after public comments, so Jeff?
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate this opportunity to address the planning commission and introduce this project, I know that you saw it a couple of weeks ago, but I know it's a public hearing, so maybe people that are just tuning in and seeing it for the first time, so actually, if we could please unmute Matthew Higgins, I'll let him give a quick overview of the project, he's our project coordinator on this one. Here we go, thank you Jeff, and yep, thank you everybody on the planning commission and everybody who's in attendance today. I'm just here to kind of go through the site with you all again and give a bit of an explanation of how it will work. Nick, do you mind pulling up the site plan for me?
Sorry, I gotta scroll through some other things first.
That's topography, there we go. All right, so what we're envisioning for the site is going to be small warehousing. As you can see, it is a total of 80,000 square feet, split between seven different buildings. The top six buildings are going to be a single story and that southernmost one is going to be a two-story one. As you can see, access to the site is provided by a paved asphalt drive that comes through the south parcel. And actually, just to kind of help you guys envision or see what we're envisioning for the site, I actually sent Nick a couple of renders. Nick, do you mind pulling some of those up?
Sure. Not sure, can you see the rendering or is it still on the other PDF?
It's, it's still on the PDF.
Okay, that's what I thought. So stop sharing my screen for a second. Okay.
There we go, so this is a view of the southwest corner of the lot, looking at the office and the front part of the building. So as you can see, what we're envisioning for, what we're envisioning for this site is basically the most, the best looking building that you can get for this usage type. As you can see, we have, we're anticipating brickwork and glass and steel. And that this facade is also going to go along the west side of the building, we will have details on that built out later. If you go to, do you mind going to the aerial one real quick? Oh, well, this is actually, this is actually good to put in right now, this is the site as stands. So as you can see, we're planning on, you know, beatifying the site as much as possible, and you can get a really good sense of the layout and how it will fit into this land, if you go to the aerial rendering. There we go, so this is what really lays out what we're envisioning. Please note that this is not an exact representation of how it's going to look, but rather it's an artistic vision of what we are envisioning for the property. If you want to look at exactly where the, exactly where things like the handicapped parking is going to go, that's all reflected on the site plan. This more shows how we want the site to look. As you can see, there's a very wide drive aisle on the, on the east side of the parcel, heading towards the back. And that should give plenty of room for boats and RVs and, you know, any trucks that have to go back there. Lighting, as you can see, is all directly on the exterior of the building. It's all going to be dark sky compliant so as to mitigate our additions, the light pollution as much as possible. And as you can see, there is a vegetated swale that we're, that will serve as a barrier between our site and the road. And that is going to be seeded and filled with a number of local plants and flora. And that will serve as a, as a way to mitigate, mitigate flooding and also prevent all pollutants from entering the, entering the watershed. So that's, that's my general overview of the site, I'm happy to take questions and comments from anybody who cares to add.
Thanks, Matthew, thanks, Matthew. Jeff, anything more to add or you, we're ready to move?
Okay, we're ready to move and we're, we're here, I'd, I'd like to, you know, just point out that we'd love to get moving on this project, so I, I know that it's abnormal for the planning commission to vote on the same night of seeing something, but, you know, you've seen it before, so we'd, we'd love it if we could get this thing moving if possible, so thank you.
Okay, great, so before we go to public comment, any, any comments or questions from planning commissioners? George?
On the north east side, that little L that comes off there. I see like in your rendering, you had a boat from the aerial map. What's the, you have some type of landscape screening on the southeast side? What's on the, as you go up that east, east side going to the north, is that just whatever's there now?
As far as landscaping outside of the fence?
Yeah, it's lands, as far as, yeah, as far as landscaping goes, the buffering.
Yeah, between, that's on the east side of the property line. Yes. Where we share a boundary with the Hossford Brothers Construction Company. So there is quite a bit of existing vegetation there, mature trees, you know, nice buffers between, between the buildings, and we hope to preserve and improve that along that line.
So you intend to maybe put some smaller stuff in there?
Exactly. We'd like to make it look as much like this photo as possible. It is a rendering and as Matthew pointed out, it's not from an engineering or architectural standpoint, perfect, but we like to start with a picture and do our best to deliver something very similar to what that is.
Nice, yeah, I just, and you don't know what's going there in the future, or I don't anyways, I'm sure somebody has an idea, but just to protect whoever's that property there now, okay?
And we, we have a very good working relationship with the neighbor of the property as we've been working with them over the past few years, actually, to acquire and develop this property, so we've had multiple conversations about how to harmoniously work together with the different uses and, you know, Mr. Hossford's not here today to, you know, I guess, tell you that, but I'm sure that if anyone asked, he'd, he'd tell you the same thing.
Yeah, when I just look at the picture, I just see the parking, the rental spaces, you know, where you park your boats or whatever on the east side. But then I don't see any buffer there, so that's why I asked.
Our intent, especially with the outdoor area, would be to screen it as much as we can so that it's not a nuisance to anyone to see any outdoor storage that's there. That's kind of the intent, and tucking it on the northeast corner as well as it'll be hidden behind buildings and landscape screening kind of on all sides.
That's, that'd be my own concern, but I like your renderings.
Thank you, thank you for the questions.
Thanks, George, commissioners, any other comments at this time? We'll have other opportunities. Okay, so let's move to a general public comment on this site plan and special use permit. Anyone from the public would like to address the planning commission on this issue?
Yeah, Ray.
Consideration and the giant storage area that's across the road on Coleman, across 78, whether or not where this project would, you know, not to stifle competition by no means, but I just, I didn't know, you know, as a, just as a person of interest, how does this fit in with that? And I see that's, that finally, finally somebody at Hossford was able to utilize their property that's been for sale for like 12 years.
Thank you. Sure, okay. So, you know, we actually did a market study of the surrounding area for a need for this type of thing. And there certainly is a tremendous demand for, for this type of product, otherwise we wouldn't be investing our time and money in it. But ours, we, we would like to humbly think that ours is going to look a heck of a lot better and be a lot shinier and nicer asset to the community, so if I was going to use it, I'd, I'd probably choose that one. So, you know, the one across the street has been there for a while and could probably use some improvements.
Most definitely, anyone else in the public have any comment or questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any other requests or comments, so let's bring it back to the planning commission, commissioners, any, any comments or questions for the applicant?
Nick, is there any?
Yep, go ahead, George.
Nick, is there any way to address to make sure we can, or do they, do they meet the landscaping ordinance on that east, that low? Behind them parking spots?
The landscape ordinance, are you referencing the new one that the planning commission?
Do they meet the standards currently?
Yes. Yes, they do.
So George, I hear some concern about the landscaping. So.
Just, yeah. Yeah, it's basically that, the, the buffer that's behind them parking spots, you know? If I remember them are mature trees there, so there's not a lot of lower cover. I imagine they're going to have a fence there and I'm sure it'll be a nice fence, I, I don't think that'll be an issue of ugly, you know, fencing there with half dead trees, I, I don't see that coming from this project. But, you know, I was just wondering about how that would look if you were on that property 10 years from now, whatever it develops as with just parking spots and fence there. That's why I asked if it, Matt, ours, okay.
So Jeff, since, since I only saw the rendering today, is there any distance between the rendering and the, the landscape plan that's including, that's included in the site plan?
We asked the renderer to, to do their best to represent what we had on the landscape plan. But it's not perfectly consistent, but it is a pretty good representation, and I'd like to add that we have been tracking the planning commission's, you know, progress on the landscape plan and we're, we're generally supportive of it. And, you know, even if, even if you as a body were to vote to approve our, our project tonight, I think many of you know, we have a regular presence in the township and we're, you know, we're interested in maintaining that relationship and whatever that means, so if there was a concern of some kind, I mean, for, for what it's worth, we'd be interested in, in making sure that, that everyone at the planning commission level remained happy even, even after that time.
Thanks, Jeff. I do remind commissioners too, that we're approving both the site plan or potentially approving both the site plan and a special use permit. Special use permit does allow us to have a little bit more flexibility and the conditions that we put on that approval. Just, just so everyone knows that.
Or, yeah, go ahead. You know, we're, sorry, but we're, we're not a fly-by-night operation, you know, we intend to be here and we intend to build a really great asset for the community and I hear George's concerns about the adjacent parcel to that, and one thing that comes to mind is, I believe that right on the other side of those mature trees is actually the back of large industrial pole barn structure that exists there. So that would be a buffer, because there is quite a nice building that the Hossford Brothers Company has built back there for an office, so depending on how that were to be used in the future. And so definitely a valid concern, but it is probably screened by that building and we also intend to continue to improve that screening.
Thank you, any other comments or questions from commissioners? And if not, Nick, I don't think you ran through the conditions, did you, but if you wouldn't mind running through those proposed conditions that you note in the packet?
Sure, I'll scroll back up there. So there were four proposed conditions for approval. The first is that the applicant will provide documentation of approval from the mid Michigan District Health Department for the well and onsite septic. The second is that the applicant will provide documentation of an easement for driving access on the northeast portion of the Sunrise Forest site. The third is that the applicant will provide documentation related to M dot approval of stormwater discharge into the M dot right of way. And the fourth condition is that all of the other conditions will be satisfied before the applicant may pull any building permits.
Okay, thanks, Nick. So commissioners, you know, I think we're in a position here, we could probably approve the special use permit and site plan. Since there is no public comment, there doesn't seem to be any outstanding issues. Both noted by Nick or by any commissioner, some concern perhaps with some landscaping on the north side of that, but it sounds like George, this is not something that you're wanting to add any conditions in addition to the four that Nick mentioned?
I, I don't think so, I think if they're, if Nick says they're meeting what they're supposed to meet, I'm okay with it, and I think that if it does do something, we'd have to do and say something to them.
Okay.
Something big deal.
Okay, so last opportunity for general public comment before I close the public hearing. Okay, I'm going to close, close the public hearing, so commissioners, are we willing to make a motion here to approve the site plan and special use permit? John?
Dan, I got a couple of concerns. It looks as though this is two separate entities, the original building that was going to be the marijuana and the restaurant and the storage are two separate entities, is that correct, Jeff?
So. Yes, that is correct.
So you're going to need to have some kind of agreement, the well and the septic disposal system would be jointly maintained by those two separate entities, or how, how do you plan on doing that? Because are you going to have two separate systems or?
That's a great question and something that we thought about in detail, and we were hoping to actually share the same system, but ultimately concluded that that wasn't feasible or a clean way to develop the properties, because they truly are two separate projects in, in every conceivable way except for the easement that allows passage over the other, so we currently have it engineered to have its own standalone water and onsite sewage treatment for this project.
John, did you have, sounded like you maybe had a couple other questions?
Well, that was my main concern, Dan, because there, there are two separate issues, one is the sewage system, the other is the well. And I didn't see two separate systems designed into the package.
The current plan is to have two completely standalone independent systems.
George?
John, do you think that needs to be put in there? Somehow? Into the wording?
It definitely is going to have to be a requirement of the project to proceed, there's, and I don't know what your language covers in that regard, Nick.
I, I would say that those would more than likely both fall under the approval from the health department. But if you, if you would like something in there that's a little bit more specific, I'm, I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, I would be a lot more comfortable if that was made clear. I would too.
And we're also okay with that, because that is our plan already, it's our belief, talking to our engineers, that the health department will require that as part of the process, so we're totally comfortable with that as well.
So Nick, do you want to, on the fly here, propose some language that addresses this concern?
Yes, I would say something to the extent of applicant shall provide details of the I don't want to say separated, because that implies.
Separation?
I, I mean, honestly, I'm still having a hard time figuring out how the existing proposed condition doesn't cover it, but you know, something to the extent of applicant shall provide details of well and septic to staff.
Independent to each project or something like that?
Yeah, I think that's the issue, just to, unless, you know, they were to change that, is that what your concern is?
So my point being that this is a different parcel, so it, you know, if this were a different ownership, I don't think this question would really be coming up.
It wouldn't be, I think you're right, but because it's the same ownership, don't you think it's relevant to the, to the, to the case then, I mean?
One parcel sells and one parcel don't.
So I mean, I think if we just have the assurance and Jeff sounds like he's fine with it, it's just that, you know, this project developed separate water and septic from the adjacent parcel, right, from the adjacent parcel to the south.
Yeah, I'm writing it down, hold on.
One more point to clarify is there is some common ownership, but it's not exactly the same ownership, but there is some common, common ownership between the two parcels, and we've been advised that the health department will require, will require that, but if we want to put language in that says that each project would have its own independent system, and we're totally supportive of that, because that's what we're planning on doing anyway. Certainly, it'd be a lot more cost effective if we could share, but unfortunately, we've been told we can't.
All right, so applicant shall provide details of well and septic system separate from the parcel to the south to, to staff.
Okay. John, does that sound?
Would that just be in addition, would that be the fifth condition?
Yes.
If that's the case, I'll move to approve with all five conditions being met.
I'll second that.
All right, John, so this is approval of both the site plan and special use permit, so we have a motion, we have support, any further discussion?
This of both projects? South or north project, I'm sorry?
Yeah, just the north project, yep.
Sorry.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion signaled by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
And oppose the same sign. Okay, it has been approved, guys, thanks for coming and answering questions and giving us that overview.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the second item under new business is the Taco Bell development in the Meyer outlet. So this is an introduction. So this is an introduction. Uh we do have, I guess it's a initial site plan in the packet.
Packet.
So Nick, can you take us into this?
Sure, so uh I'm. Think I'm recognizing a couple of the names of of people here on the meeting uh as being from. Uh the firm handling this application. So this is a proposed uh Taco Bell with the drive through. Uh it's the outlet of the Meyer. Um some of the planning commissioners may recall. Uh from twenty nineteen uh when there had been a proposal for a car wash to go in here. It is that same parcel. Um because as you know, the although they received all the approvals, uh the car wash never. Uh moved forward with development. So this is um you know, a a pretty straightforward run of the mill project. Um the only caveat here being that the lot uh at the road. Uh does not have enough uh lot width. Uh this development district requires a minimum of two hundred square feet. Uh this parcel has um. Excuse me, uh can't remember the exact number. It's between one twenty and one fifty. Uh this is where the planned unit development comes into play. Uh as you all know, from the revised uh P U D language. That has been adopted uh by the township. The uh minimum acreage for a P U D is three acres, but. The planning commission has the ability to waive that requirement if they deem it appropriate. Um so they are asking for a waiver of that um. Minimum uh acreage as well as the minimum lot width. Uh it does widen to two hundred feet uh back from the road. But right at the road, it does not meet that two hundred foot requirement. And as you'll see, it's a a pretty uh well designed project in my opinion. Um I'm still waiting on some uh excuse me, some uh agency reviews. Before I I feel comfortable making a recommendation. Um and of course, because this is a proposed planned unit development, we would also need to have a public hearing. Because it requires a special use permit. So like I said, it does look like we have a couple of of people here. I I don't wanna put anyone on the spot, but uh is there anyone here from uh Excel uh engineering? Who would like to provide any additional comment?
Seeing any uh indications that someone's wanting to speak. Um so Nick. The the applicant, of course, has been given a a copy of the newly revised P O D ordinance, I assume.
Yes.
Um yeah, uh and there are some other conditions there if I remember correctly. Um but they're only right now asking for that um those exceptions to lot frontage. And the minimum size, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh if I recall, the probably the point that you're referencing is the minimum open space area.
Exactly.
The current layout of the site is there are, i- if I'm remembering correctly, four trees in the very middle. Um but aside from that, it is entirely open green space. Um even with the proposed building, uh just eyeballing it, I would of course do a calculation when we get to that point. But just eyeballing it, it looks like it does meet that minimum percentage of open space. Um you know, one thing I I might even recommend actually is that on that northern side of the site that we uh ask if. If the applicant would add a couple of trees, uh because like I said, right now, it's just an open uh mowed grass area.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, and I I don't I don't think. Is there a landscaping? Oh, there's a landscaping plan, maybe, is there?
It does look like a hand's been raised, Dan.
Okay, great. Uh so that's Jason, I think. Jason, Mr. Day?
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't able to unmute myself. Um yeah, Jason Day with Excel Engineering here. Um I thought, uh yeah, the uh the project was well presented and. Um I guess myself as well as Jeremy Wagner, who put most of the uh information together. Um that's in front of you. We're we're here if there are any questions. Um one change that may be coming forward in regards to the site plan layout. Is Myers looking to have us push our drive entry directly north off of their southernmost uh main drive. Instead of off their um intermittent drive here between their their main store and their gas station. Um that may be one change they have us make, but um other than that, um. Willing to take any questions you guys have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments or questions at this time? John?
Uh the documents show that this is a purchased par- uh property. Uh and if you're gonna have a shared driveway with Meyer, I would like to see a copy of. Your agreement of how that driveway is gonna be maintained as far as the cost and the upkeep of that. Shared space is gonna be.
Sure, I would I would assume um you know Taco Bell would be responsible. For their part of, you know, their their driveway on their on their lot. Meyer would retain, you know, maintenance and snow removal and everything. Um that they currently do on on their property. Um but uh. Um yeah, we can put something in the documents in regards to that if if needed.
Just a reminder to commissioners too that uh because they're seeking to run this through a P U D that the the planning commission does have some flexibility here. In terms of conditions we may impose on the applicant. Um so just keep that in mind as you're reviewing these site plans. So uh Nick, you're not looking for any action, I don't believe, tonight. Um it's just simply an introduction. Is that correct?
Generally, that's correct. I would feel comfortable if if uh there was a vote to uh approve the waiver of that minimum lot. Uh acreage for the P U D. Um but aside from that, no other action is being requested other than scheduling a public hearing.
Yep, so I don't know what commissioners think about that, uh whether you wanna take that vote tonight. I I'm kind of mixed opinion about that just because I'd like to see the. Public hearing go through just to make sure that we are addressing any issues that may come up. Um I feel like we're losing a little leverage. Uh if we we give that away, that issue at this point. But of course, I don't foresee any problems. That said, I don't foresee any problems for myself. In approving the project with the the acreage on the acreage that they have. Other commissioners, uh yeah, John.
Uh I don't have any issue with it, Dan, either, but I'd like to wait till after the public hearing to. Make that uh motion to approve it, the waiver of the lot acreage.
George?
I wouldn't either. You're you are, just to make sure I'm clear, you're talking about the one twenty-four that's in front. I'll buy Saginaw. That runs east and west or directly east and west in the front, which should be two hundred, which is showing to your one twenty-four. Is that correct, Nick?
There's that plus uh the as the ordinance language for the planned unit development states. The minimum acreage is three acres.
Right.
Um you know, again, when we had gone through that process, I'd recommended that we not have a minimum acreage, but there. Uh wasn't a whole lot of comfortability with that. Um but the way that the ordinance is written, if a project comes through with a smaller than three acre size. Uh the planning commission has the ability to waive that three acre requirement.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay, so we do have at least three planning commissioners on record here saying probably no problem with that minimum acreage, but um wanting to see that public hearing. Carried out before we actually make it formal. And then if there's some changes to the drive, which the applicant indicated, that might be good information to have as well.
You can add me to that too, Dan. I feel the same way.
Alright, people, thank you.
Okay. Uh Dan, the only other uh requested action, if you will, would be uh scheduling the public hearing. For the meeting on July twenty seventh.
Okay, yeah, great. So uh any objections to that? If not, let's just go ahead and schedule that.
I'm good with that.
Okay, great. And Nick, it looks like the site plan is is complete. I mean, I'm seeing a lighting plan. I'm seeing a landscape plan. I'm seeing elevations. I can't see anything that is missing. You?
Uh not that I can think of, no. It's a a pretty complete package.
Okay, alright. So to the applicant or representatives, we appreciate uh you being complete here. Appreciate you coming for us, answering questions and. And giving us a real good look at uh at the site plan. Um so I guess we'll probably see you back here at the end of July.
Yeah, we appreciate uh appreciate the questions and everybody's comments and maybe just a quick question for Nick. Would we will we be receiving further staff comments prior to that public hearing that we would respond to and get you an updated set of drawings? Or any comments that have to be taken care of?
Yes, as I get agency review comments in, I will forward them along to you. From what I recall, the couple sets of comments I've gotten back have been pretty short. Um and like I said, as I get those, we'll pass those along to you for you all to make any necessary changes to the site plan.
Okay, perfect. And then at that time, I'll make the tweaks to the driveway and get you guys a fresh set of drawings to to present them.
Right.
Alright, great. Thanks, Mr. Day.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, let's move on. Last item under new business is the capital improvement plan. Uh and we've got two projects here. Uh we've got a lot of information in the packet for the Park Lake Trail, and I think we've got a representative here that is willing to talk about that project a little bit. Give us a summary perhaps and answer any questions that we may have. Uh and then we have the Cousins Park improvements, Nick.
Just before we uh get started with the Park Lake Trail, I just um I know that this has been somewhat of a. An item of confusion uh that I've heard about from a handful of members of the public in the past. Um you know, I'm I'm not saying anyone in particular, but I just wanna clarify that. Um you know, the planning commission's role in the C I P is solely to uh review these projects that in the past have been called non discretionary. Uh the terminology that we're using now is uh community development. Uh the intent there being that these are. Uh you know, clearly uh public assets. That are frequently proposed by uh members of the public through our committees or our departments. Um but what I I really wanna stress is that um you know, the planning commission providing a high score to a project. Does not mean that it's going to be funded. Um I've I've heard that said by a couple of people and I just really wanna reiterate. The planning commission's role here with the C I P is solely making a recommendation to uh the township superintendent and the township board as it relates to the budgeting process. So um you know, with that being said, I I think uh the planning commissioners do need to decide if we want to score these two projects tonight. Or not. Um if you elect to do so in terms of scoring them, I'm happy to share my screen. Uh I do have the PDF of the scoring sheet uh so that everyone can see it and we can read through those. Those scoring criteria and and go one by one. So I guess with that said, I'll turn it back over to Dan.
Dan, this is Joel. I'm a little bit uh I'm a little bit skeptical skeptical about doing this as um I'm in my vehicle and I kinda like to. Have a little bit more detail in front of me rather than trying to talk about this in depth in my current state of affairs.
Yeah, that makes sense, Joe. So you're referring to to actually doing the assessment, do doing the grading or evaluation. Is that right?
Yeah, just for me. I mean, everybody else can have their own opinion, but I'm not in a position where I can get to uh.
Yeah. Okay, uh Karen.
Uh good evening, gentlemen. Um it is my intention um to, in the next month. Um put out information for um budgets to be developed by the township. Um you certainly have time before my budget is due in September to take your time. Joel does not have to score these while he's driving. Um so you can take your time and do that at your next meeting if that's your if that's your preference.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, I would prefer to see, I mean, we we have all talked about the scoring sheet and it's been revised since the last time uh we used it in evaluation. So it would be good to put that in the packet um and have everyone think about these projects with that scoring sheet in front of us and maybe not on the fly. But we can probably get that done fairly quickly, um possibly at the next meeting.
I I I'm inclined to agree with you, Dan. I don't think it'll be uh nearly as complicated as it ended up being last year. Um if you'll recall from when we talked about the scoring criteria, uh it's been changed so that a lot of the questions are yes or no. Or uh you know, it's it's high, medium, low, rather than being a scale of one to ten, uh which I think is is where a lot of the. Road bumps came in last year.
Yeah, I don't even know if they were road bumps, but it did it lengthened the process. I don't know. We didn't have much disagreement, I think. We we pretty much came to a consensus, but yeah, it did lengthen the process a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah. Um well, let's start with the um with the Park Lake Trail and Ray, you're here, I assume you can uh. Give the planning commission just a quick summary of what you're intending to do here and then we can uh ask you questions if we should have some.
Okay, I'll just uh start by assuming that everyone has been able to read the the C I P as it as it's written. It's basically uh give or take about fifty thousand dollars in this phase. It um. In about, first of all, we were we were tasked by the by the trustees uh several years ago about breaking up the project. Because it initially come in at about, I believe, two point seven million dollars and to two thousand fourteen or fifteen by uh Spicer. And that made everybody's eyes roll, so we decided to break it up into. And uh so this one is basically phase one, which would uh require having a parking area, which incidentally, I. You know, I I didn't know if I should fasten these to the C I P, which so I did not, but I have several aerial views, uh drone footage of. They're stills of uh the parking area of the proposed trail. Um if I can share those, that's, you know, something I'd be happy to do. Right now, or you know, I can send them as a packet.
They may be in our packet already, Ray. I mean, we do have aerial shots of the parking area.
Okay, well, I I furnished them, you know, to the township and everything, so it's quite possible, yes. Um so basically what it is, is the the uh Spicer Group, when they did the water control structure. Were with uh Parks and Rec and Park Lake Advisory Board and Friends of Park Lake to uh. Work on and develop a non-motorized trail system around the back of the lake. Uh many of you don't realize, but the Park Lake Trail was actually here long before we were. It was in about the same place the Native Americans actually used it. And it originally came from where MSU is now and went through this area around Park Lake all the way up to uh north of the whip. So uh not a new, it's not a new concept, but uh we're just trying to approve on it so that the the community can. Uh utilize the vast township owned land that's been uh sitting for sixty years. Not used and it would be an ideal place to conserve it as a natural green space, which um you know, is. Rage now, but I think it's very important. Um and it gives us an opportunity to have some non-motorized trails in and around the various neighborhoods, including. The pines from there up through, you know, Oak Island Village. That's all that I, you know, the the. I don't wanna call it a mobile home park, but basically it comes from there, goes around on the on the engineered berm. That they utilized for the water control structure all the way around to the south end of West Road, past the uh. The dam water control structure, you know, to the engineered uh parking area. Now, what this I P involves is funds for uh finishing off the parking area. It actually has. Over four feet of of uh clay based fill already. Because it was it was implied uh to Spicer Engineering that they were going to be, you know, heavy equipment like school buses. Uh snowplows and that nature, and so it needed to be very strong to support them. But uh this would be basically clearing uh five years of vegetation that have grown on that uh improved site. And then putting some kind of uh permeable surface such as crushed limestone or the like. I think we've kind of ruled out uh crushed asphalt because of the bitumen ascent, you know, environmental uh problems. But then it would be um improving the trail, which is already there. I I wanna emphasize built up by Spicer. For this very purpose, I believe the trail is 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 already ten feet wide and perfectly level and it's a immediately adjacent. If you're looking south, it would be on the left-hand side. immediately adjacent. If you're looking south, it would be on the left-hand side of the paved area of the extreme portion, southern portion of Webster Road. Uh, it's it's grown up with clover and stuff now, and the and the geese really enjoy it sitting on that, but uh in the CIP, we have have that as being mown uh mowed, excuse me. And that's maintenance portion of that fifth five hundred. It was a a rough estimate by DP Dad like, or we could hire it out. I would like to see personally um utilizing that money to put down some kind of crushed limestone or something. That way we wouldn't have to mow it. And uh it's not bad uh to walk on, and it's also even uh ADA accessible if you have a proper compressed surface. So then it it turns uh to the left and goes on top of the berm right straight toward the water control structure. That involves about a quarter of a mile, I would say, from the from the parking areas. I call it the trailhead. We call it the trailhead to the water control structure, which is uh, you know, Bath Township's own waterfall. It's only about four feet high, but we have a waterfall. So then from there, it utilizes the uh the uh former public road that goes over the land bridge where the water from Park Lake goes out into the the Ramey Channel drain system. And uh then progresses probably another quarter of a mile through uh a very mature hardwood forest that used to be uh, well, at one time it was going to be Oak Island uh uh real estate developer. I believe this was back in the fifth, forties and fifties. But uh that has all been reclaimed, all but one lot, uh which is landlocked by the township. And uh there's a myriad of other places along in there that could be points of interest for a fantastic trail system for the uh for the township. And uh, you know, that's pretty much it.
You, Ray. Um, Ray, you'd mentioned that um it sounded like you would have preferred to use crushed limestone instead of mowing those trails to the water structure. Did you? Did you guys get an estimate of limestone, what that would cost? I'm wondering if so, or if not even, why do you decide to go the route you're proposing here?
Well, the initial reason we decided to just by virtue of getting the thing started was just to mow the trail. I mean, because the trail is there. It was put there by Spicer, very nice one, incidentally, and then it was, of course, seeded, you know, to prevent erosion and the like. But uh that was, you know, a costly measure to just, you know, get to get the trail going, but eventually it could be, you know, phase uh one, one A, but uh it just depends on the money, you know. Um, yes, we did get some some, you know, tongue-in-chesterments. Some of them wanted to, you know, excavate down six inches, take out the top soil and then put in a Geo Geo Mat down and then put uh the uh the permeable, the permeable limestone surface down and compact it. So that's prohibitive, you know, I I think that's not necessary, if you will. So uh I I think if we even just put with the surface that Spicer put down, I say Spicer because they were the project managers. I don't think we would lose too much gravel, you know, through sinkage by not putting a Geo Mat down, but Geo Mat isn't really that expensive either if we wanted to do that. That's just a possibility and a personal comment, you know, in my head.
Yeah, I do notice though that the annual maintenance costs and not just the mowing, but it's five and a half thousand dollars, so presumably you you'd save quite a bit of money since the mowing is quite expensive, I guess, right? If you were to to avoid that that maintenance.
Yeah, and I think that maintenance cost includes the porta potty as well.
Yeah, it does. You know, it does.
Okay.
Um, and you do, I say I have another question to uh the plants. Uh, so you 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 mentioned the plants that are sort of creating the boundary to the parking area. Um, you don't talk about sort of uh why you decided to do that. Um, so these are all ornamental grasses, and I think ornamental grass grasses. You typically cut those back every year, so some maintenance is going to be required for those as well. I don't I don't see those itemized in your maintenance budget, but wondering if you could just speak to that issue.
When you say ornamental grasses, what do you, what do you, what do you mean? What do you refer to?
The maiden grass and the uh the the switchgrass you you've got on the north end. What's that? The north side and the uh the other side of the parking lot. It looks like you've got ornamental grasses. You're going to be planting those on the periphery of the parking lot?
Yes, that was that, yeah, that was merely merely to help delineate and to prevent erosion after the the parking area was was uh was uh laid out. And incidentally, that parking area is about one hundred yards by one hundred yards by one hundred thirty yards. I know it's kind of a triangle in there. Um, and it could be broken up, you know, in any any way, shape or form, but uh, yeah.
Yeah, and so the budget for that is four thousand dollars, and I'm just, I guess my question is just, you know, is it just to make the parking lot look nice? And then if so, right, who's going to be maintaining those ornamental grasses every year that are, you know, need to be cut back?
Well, I I I guess I don't I don't understand about the ornamental grasses being cut back. I I'm not familiar with any ornamental grasses that need to be cut back. They just they're either deciduous and they die, and then new new foliage comes back up the next next year. What do you, I, what do you?
I mean, any ornamental grass that I've ever had, I always get back. And when I looked at these two species online, they recommended that annually they be cut back, so.
Uh, that may be very well for, you know, for for proper growth and and proper proper uh proliferation of it. I'm not sure.
Okay.
So no, I I guess I would have to say, no, we didn't think about cutting back the ornamental grasses. In that case, we might even uh, you know, omit those, so we won't have to cut them back.
Yeah, I was just kind of wondering what the reasoning was. It was just to make it look nice because it was, you know, obviously you're you're going to delineate that parking lot with uh timber, it sounds like, right? So.
Yeah, and cattails.
And cattails, right.
Yeah, so that that, yeah, that was that was just uh uh something to make it look pretty, yes.
Okay, okay.
And natural.
Yeah, so thank you for that overview, though, Ray. Any comments or other questions by commissioners at this time?
I think Sharon had her end up too.
Uh, Karen.
As far as the trail goes, just a comment about the the granite, the limestone, no matter what you put on there and it's gonna have foliage around it, trees, that always fills up a rock bed. Um, so typically, like at your house, if you have a rock bed, you have tons of trees over them. If you just leave them, the rock bed will be a planter for little seedlings that grow from trees. Uh, same with the foliage from the shrubs that uh Dan was just talking about. If you let them die, they just, that that uh just turns into um earth around there, all them dead leaves and stuff if they're not cut back. And so they just basically fill in whatever gravel they're covering and are over over time. I, my main concern though is uh, what does that trail do to the hunting on the lake? Have you guys had discussion about the, I see on the sign your example sign. I assume that's just a sign, for example, hunting by permission only. What's what's the synopsis on hunting on Park Lake with the trail?
Well.
Right now, it's open hunting.
The uh, I think the township has some regulations in regards to hunting on on township land. And uh it's never been enforced. I personally, I was growing up, I hunted all over back there, yes. The only hunting, I, you may be talking about duck hunting. Is that what you're talking about on the lake?
Uh, for the most part, yes.
Um, the trail per se is almost out of sight of the lake unless you actually take one of the tangent trails that would be added in one of the, one of the later uh phases, but uh uh hunting you, I can't remember the exact verbiage, but you're not supposed to shoot toward the shore, you know, and it's supposed to be a hundred yards out or something like that in regards to duck hunting. So I don't think it would be a factor at all in regards to waterfall hunting.
Yeah, I would like to see what the impact is on that open trailhead, because if you have a bunch of I'm sure if you have moms in there, kids or dads, you know, what if I was walking my kids or dogs or whatever, and all of a sudden someone started shooting, and I wasn't aware of what was going on, it would probably be a little troublesome, so.
Well, I get, I guess it would have to be the same as like out at at Rose Lake, the trails out there. I used to mountain bike out there quite a bit, and uh, you know, there are on public land, there are open seasons for hunting, and so if you're gonna go out into public land, you better educate yourself in regards to when seasons are open, like when deer season is around. I don't care where I'm at, I mean, if I'm fishing, I'll wear something fluorescent orange, you know, just to be safe, so.
Yeah, it would be an educational thing for me to make sure that that was on the signage and stuff, and I'd hate to see that taken away from that lake. There's not a lot of lakes around uh as much.
Yeah, I don't see where it would.
The youth lose that.
I don't see where it would have found water at all.
Thank you for your time.
Are there other comments? Karen, did you have a comment? I maybe missed your hand. Okay.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wondered, um, in terms of, I know I've worked closely with Parks and Rec and Park Lake advisory on this for, I think, since I got here in two thousand twelve. Um, what are your thoughts on additional phases, Ray?
Um, we have those all lined out. In fact, we had a manhunt meeting that we went in depth into delineate the actual phases. Um, I put together a small uh incidentally this week, a uh PowerPoint presentation, if you will. I actually kind of scoured Spicer's PowerPoint presentation, then edited it to show the phases. Um, basically, there's going to be various, a multitude of phases, but there are three main phases, in my opinion. This one is the first one. This one would be, the second one would be to um improve the trail over to the termination presently at the back of Oak Island Village. And then um with that uh uh phase, we could even clear the uh flag lot that goes out to Park Lake Road. Um, that could be done actually anytime. Um, and then the the main phase, the most expensive one, of course, would be the mandatory elevated walkways through the wetland from the Park Lake Flag Lot around behind Oak Island Village to uh a joint so that we can have a, you know, a true affair, if you will, non-motorized from Park Lake Road over to South Webster.
So what would you estimate would be the total of those three phases together?
The three phases, that that was the phase in the highest that, how do I want to say, the highest cost estimate, I would say, was the the Spicer estimate that you may have seen back in two thousand fourteen. It came in at something like two point seven million, and that was because that was taken into consideration the M dot grant, which requires a twelve, ten or twelve-foot wide path that's that's asphalt. And with uh, which I think is, uh, we don't want an airstrip, you know, on our public non-motorized trail, in my opinion. We just want something that people can enjoy nature and jog and possibly ride their mountain bike on. So I I I really, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just, it that that jogged my mind because how do I justify to um people that I may get complaints from as the township superintendent that as a, uh, you know, an American with disabilities um act that it's not compliant and they can't utilize the trail? I mean, I I'm I'm just, that came to mind when you said that.
One of the main things, in fact, I I personally have just been researching the ability to make a trail ADA compliant without paving it. Um, and and that is one of the things I came to with the uh, the the compacted limestone, which is which is ADA compliant. I believe it only has to be six to eight feet wide. And uh, so that's where I, and and I I think you could save an exponential amount of money by doing it that way. And also, um, I don't think we need to have quite an extravagant uh elevated boardwalk through the wetlands that Spicer classified. In fact, that was twelve feet wide. You could drive almost drive two cars down, you know, passing each other, which is which is ludicrous. I don't think it needs to be that extravagant. Doesn't need to be anything like that. We're Meridian Township, where I'm sure all of us have seen that along Okemos Road, that elevated platform.
Okay, so what is your estimate then? Not Spicer's estimate, but what is your estimate for the three phases?
For all three phases? I think it could be done for a half million dollars. Or less.
Okay.
And that's, and I want to emphasize, that's me personally, so that.
Sure, I know, I'm asking Ray Kike.
Yeah, no, I I'm not uneducated, and I actually have looked at it, and um I really honestly think that we could get the entire thing done for about that price. And, you know, of course, there's going to be other add-ons. They say, hey, we can make trails over here. We can have something go out to the point uh observation platforms. I'd like to see an educational center out there. And in fact, when we had the public hearing, we, three or four teachers from Bath High School that in elementary school that would applaud it, an outdoor education center out there. That's where I learned about flora and fauna from Bob Perdix, so.
Sure. Do any of those phases contain um restrooms?
Uh, the first, no permanent restrooms that I, I know of.
And that other than the porta potties, yeah.
Correct. That'd be icing on the cake, you know, but we can't even get permanent restrooms at Cousins, so I don't know about half behind the lake, so. That'd be great if we could get, you know, a grant to get all that done and have it be first class, but uh I'm willing to take baby steps.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate your answers.
Ryan.
Ray, uh, if you recall, when I was previously on the board, there was not a lot of energy at the board level for this. Uh, I think the cost, you're right, sort of made people's eyes bug out. But there was also, in my opinion, just a general disinterest and maybe even some homeowners back there that opposed the idea. I haven't talked to my new colleagues about this yet. Have you and the other folks from Parks and Rec and Park Lake Advisory Board engaged with board members to see if there's interest moving forward into future phases?
Uh, we have. We've had quite a bit of discussion. Um, and there is, in my opinion, there is quite a bit of positivity in the group. Um, I'd like to thank yours too, but um, yeah, I, you know, it's just I I don't totally grasp why there's such a uh a shudder when we talk about the cost of this. I mean, how many of us can go out and spend cash or car? That's why we get a car loan, you know, and take it a little bit at a time to pay for the to pay for that uh object that we want to have, and that's why we broke this up into phases so that we can afford it. And uh, and with a with a D and R trust fund, in fact, I've been in contact with them as well. It's attainable, definitely attainable, and uh it would improve our township exponentially. I mean, Mott would have nothing on us, you know. We'd have uh something quite the equivalent of that. And in regards to the uh private landowners, there are two back there. And John Yurkin uh and I dug through the the archives and found, I I've sent it previously to the township, but I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but it's a a libra uh libra two nine three, page one seven two. Then you can all look it up. It was dated May of nineteen fifty-eight where long ago, two landowners at the end of Webster Road tried to close the road, and they sued the Clinton County Road Commission. And the circuit court ruled that that is a public road, and they can in no way, shape or form prevent the public from utilizing it. And I brought that up in the past two thousand fourteen, I believe, when Spicer started their their uh study to do the water control structure and your Armond Trout, I spoke with, and he was very familiar with it, and he said there is no problem there with that road being open. It, that is the onus of the private landowners to sue us. He said, we've already had a ruling in circuit court that is in our favor as the road is public. And so i- it's just, it's it's digging up old, old uh nonsensical, nonsensical, I should say, uh uh how do I want to say? Anyway, uh, disinterested uh private individuals that want their po- public road to be private. And, you know, while I can understand that and appreciate it, you know, I live on Park Lake Road, and I'd love for no traffic to go in front of my house or people to walk by, but again, it's a public road and it's owned by the county, and yes, the Clinton County Road Commission does not regularly plow that all the way down. But by definition, by a circuit court ruling, it is quote, a public road to be utilized by the public, and that's where and in fact, the trail won't even go in front of any of their houses. It will go along the berm that uh was made for the water control structure. One of the things I want to point out also is that Ken Terrapie, the the one landowner at the terminus of the southern end of Webster Road has physically blocked the road at the uh, at the earthen bridge that is immediately downstream of the water control structure. He's put a cable across it. He's put a sign there, and he's also parks his deer blind, incidentally, that he uses on township land to hunt on the trail so that we cannot get across there. I have sent a packet to uh Mark Trotter, who is I have sent a packet to uh Mark Trotter, who is the acting director of the Clinton County Road Commission. Um, with all of the uh, the surveys that Spicer did. The uh, the libra that was just referenced and aerial views of the uh. Disputed area, if you will, and asked him, uh, he has uh, Clinton County Road Commission has on retainer. Legal, legal counsel. And since the Clinton County Road Commission was the plaintiff in this lawsuit of nineteen fifty-eight. I asked him, I, you know, I, 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 in fact, called the court and asked and. They said that that would be the onus of the Clinton County Road Commission. So he is bringing that. Exact uh dilemma, if you will, to the legal counsel for legal determination. Um, Joe, incidentally, I talked to, he said that. His only concern was Bath Township accruing legal fees to try to determine, you know, if the road is legal and. And open. And I reiterated to him what I just told you that uh, it's not required because we're not the plaintiff. The Clinton County Road Commission is the plaintiff. And incidentally, the southernmost portion where the water control structure is. It's a five acre parcel that's now flooded between the, the trailhead parking area and the water control structure. That is owned by the county. That's not owned by. That township.
Thanks, Ray. So uh, any other comments? Yeah, Karen.
Um, just from my limited um knowledge over the past couple of years, um, Mark Trotter is actually the engineer for um. Clinton County Road Commission, and they've actually spoken to me. I've indicated that if there's no project. That's taken forward by the board trustees, there's really no, no reason to challenge that um ruling in court. Um, and have them spend money or us spend money if it's, if it's not taken forward at this point. If and when the board takes it forward, then I think, of course, it's, it's fine for them, for that to occur. Um, I also wanted to point out that the um, Phil Hands is indicated to me that that water control structure was never meant to. What be walked across. Um, so that's, and that's, I don't know if that's common knowledge, but that's, that's something that he said to me several times.
Oh, yeah, the, the water. Am I, I don't know if I'm still not muted. Yeah.
You, you're, you're here, yeah.
The water control structure proper, um, ho- hopefully all of you have seen it. There isn't uh. It's commonly called a catwalk that goes out, out onto it. That's merely for maintenance and to lift and lower the stop logs. That's all that's for. That's not intended for traffic to go across. And I one hundred percent agree with you. And if it's in the, I don't know, I didn't see exactly what's, which uh. Uh, attachments they put on the CIP, but we have the, the uh. Documents from Spicer that show the quote proposed footbridge across for the trail. But um, again, I argue that that's not necessary because we actually have a, I'll call it an earth bridge. That a culvert goes under directly below the water control structure, you know, to, to put the water through. And that, that land bridge was utilized, you know, for uh building of the earth berm. For the water control structure and incidentally for the Board of Water and Lakes uh water line that goes through there. Um, both of those were, were utilized for the heavy equipment to go across that, that bridge. And we really don't, really don't want to even go on. Uh, Ken Terramy's land, if you look at the aerial view. That the, where the trail goes, it simply goes right onto the land bridge from the water control structure. And I even approached him to ask if, you know, what if we built you a, a, a temporary fence right there across. That would one, number one, give us the opportunity to walk across the bridge and number two, give you the opportunity to not have people, you know. Carelessly walk through his property. So that's. Any question you ask, if we've looked at?
Thanks, Ray. Are there any other questions? Uh, but. Ray, thanks a lot for, for coming and explaining the project to us, answering the questions. Really appreciate that. So we are going to, I, I think, bring this back. Uh, at our next meeting and we'll, we'll evaluate the project.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on then. Uh, so the second project uh is the Cousins Park Improvements. Is there more? Or we can have a discussion, I guess, of what's in mind here. Uh, but Karen, you've got a couple of documents in our packet, so.
Thank you. Um, with the dissolution of the DDA, um, came uh with it was funding of approximately. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's yet to be finalized as we need to return some funds to um Lansing Community College. As they were one of the um. Bodies that lost some of their tax funds um from Bath Township as part of that, a part of the DDA authority. So when else, when all is said and done, um, that money was reserved for projects in the DDA district. Um, which still exists um in, in, in theory, I should say. Um, so the first concern I had was, you know, obviously for years, our DPW crew has tried to maintain. One of the most precious um artifacts in our community, which is the cupola that sits at Cousins Park. Um, over the years, as um time and the elements have deteriorated it. Um, it's become more of a concern. I know that in the last um year or so, since Mike Goodwin, our former DPW member. Um, painted and took care of it last time. It's actually got a woodpecker hole in it now, so. Um, the, it's, it's being ravaged um by nature and I'm extremely concerned about that, so. Um, my proposal as the first proposal of using funds in that um area was to address. Um, the deterioration and the damage that's happening to the cupola in James Cousins Memorial Park. Um, Nick was able to find a um consumer's grant opportunity and we sent a letter of interest to them. Hoping that we might um spark some interest in, in preserving this. Um, so it's possible money can come from there in addition to any funds that um the township chooses to put forth from that DDA leftover. Um, capture. Um, I'll be honest with you, I do not have a price for that at this time, only because we're reaching out to both MSU. And um U of M, I hate to say that around here, um, for a historian, uh, like a. Archaeological preservationist to come and um recommend um what steps. Or for us to work with certain people. Um, so we want to do this properly. Um, if we're preserving this, I don't want to keep taking outdoor deck paint and painting the cupola. Um, I want to be using. It wasn't you this time, Nick. I want to use um, I want to use materials and supplies and um different elements that are meant to be helping. Preserve this item. And if, you know, somebody were to recommend that it needs to go inside and maybe we create a, a replica of it. I mean, we, you know, could possibly do that. So this project isn't wholly outlined and I understand that. Um, we just, with the dissolution of the DDA in the last couple of weeks. Um, decided that it was kind of time to throw this out there and see. Um, if we could get support for this with some funding that we have. So we will continue to work on the funding. Um, mechanism and hope that even consumers will, will put money towards this um with the grant that they're offering. Um, and um, try to save this thing because I, I do think it's a precious um. Element of our community. I think it, I think it's looked to as a, I know it represents a horrible tragedy, but I think many in our community look to it. As a, a, a positive um memorial to those that lost their lives, um, that and the Penny Girl, I'm told, so. Um, I really want to, to take a shot at saving this thing before it's too late. So I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks.
Questions, questions for Karen?
I should note that, sorry, George, I just was gonna note that, um, you know, I know I submitted this project and I don't want. Um, Park, Parks and Rock or Park Lake Advisory Board to feel like they're competing with the superintendent to put something in the budget. Um, I'm leaving this to the board to decide whether or not they want to pursue either or neither or one or the other of these projects. So I won't be recommending one or the other in the budget, just so we can level the playing field. George, you had a question?
Yes, I just wanted to make the statement that that is uh, you know, to those of us that grew up here and that um. Been in the community for a long time. That is a pretty important property and I applaud you for working on this project. Very much.
Thanks, George.
And it's not just.
I'm sorry.
It's not just our community either. I've had uh.
No.
I've been out the other, just uh, a week ago, I had a, a family stop by from out of town. Uh, actually from out of state and asked where the site was and directed them to that.
Yeah.
And it was quite interesting that they had so much information. And with uh internet and everything nowadays, it's, it's becoming more popular.
It is. It's bigger than off, all of us. It is. Dan, you had a question?
Yeah, just uh, so um, yeah, as you're saying, the details are, are not yet here. Do, do you know when you might have a cost estimate? And uh, more specifics on the planned work?
Yeah, I'm working really hard to take what the DDA had proposed and to work with an expert in that area. Um. You know, I, I think um, no disrespect to anybody, but we can't have just a, a, a modern day residential carpenter. Um, working on this. And so um, that's why we're trying to reach out to you of M and MSU to see if we can find somebody that can. That can make those recommended steps that, that are critical to preserving this or replicating it. Um, and that's the part I just, I just don't know at this time, so. Um, but we'll certainly, as more information becomes available, keep you apprised of that information so that we can get closer to a number. Uh, in the next month or so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments or questions for, for Karen on this project?
Yeah, Karen, this is Joel. Hey, I might get ahold of you about an idea on this, okay?
Okay, sounds great, Joel.
It's very, very preliminary in my head as I drive, but.
Okay.
Um, I'm thinking maybe we want to talk to the Michigan carpenters and millwrights and see if we can. Ask them to give us some, some guidance on this.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Other comments, questions? Okay, thanks Karen for.
Thank you.
Taking your time to, to talk to us about this.
Always.
Okay, so um, let's go back to the agenda and we are on to, I believe, report from. Nick, is that right? I'm not scrolling it through the seventy-seven page packet up to the top, but I think that's the next agenda item.
It, it is. We haven't had a packet this long in a while. It's a little, little bit much to get used to. Um, excuse me, I primarily just have one thing for report from planner. Um, our next meeting, I just wanted to provide a reminder that we do have a public hearing on the reorganized. Uh, site plan review ordinance. Uh, if you'll recall, that sort of originated as the architectural standards. Uh, we had added some language in there clarifying a couple of the requirements as it relates to um. Wetlands and contouring as well as uh details of the landscape plan. Um, it. Now accurately references the uh, hopefully soon to be uh adopted by the, the township board. Um, landscape ordinance and uh also uh has that requirement that applicants provide a material sample board. Of their building materials so that we uh are not caught off guard in terms of, of building materials or color or anything like that. Uh, so the public hearing for that is at the next, our next meeting uh on July thirteenth. Um, and actually, one more part of, of that ordinance is clarifying uh the development review process. Uh, I think making it more user friendly in terms of reading it so that it's clear what the steps are and what order they go in. Um. So hopefully that will uh be a useful tool for us going forward. Um, at that same meeting, I'm hoping to bring back the parking requirements that we've talked about. Um, I think there are a couple of different routes that we can take with this. The way that I've currently written it. Still has parking requirements, uh, and I believe provides some opportunity for. Uh, payment in lieu of parking, but we can talk more about that at that meeting. Um, and then uh, believe it or not, actually had a little bit of extra free time, so as a, a. Something that was requested, but uh, I'll call it a special little surprise. Have added some language in there that relates to um electrical vehicle charging stations. Um, setting standards for what those uh look like in terms of placement on a property and uh where they are and are not appropriate. So um, I'm looking forward to that discussion and seeing uh where we go with that from there. Um. Aside from that, I don't believe I have anything else.
Thank you, Nick. Questions for Nick? Okay, so then this is the second public, uh, second opportunity for public comment. Anyone from the public like to address the planning commission for. The last and final time tonight. Ray?
I uh, there we go. Just wanted to say, I, I, I was wondering if there was going to be a public comment on, on that I could speak with, with Karen. I just wanted to. Offer my services if she needs of at all, and any help at all in, in the uh, the cupola preservation. Um, I was a professional headhunter for twenty-five years and so I, I kind of know how to network and how to. How to get ahold of people, so I'd be more than happy to make some calls and see if we could develop some interest and possibly even some funds to. Preserve that for posterity. I think that's extremely important.
Yeah, thank you, Ray. I appreciate that. I, I, I really do think this is bigger than any one person or just any one community and I appreciate. Everyone's ideas and, and offers to help.
Yeah, I, I, I tried, you know, in the past, as I mentioned, I don't know if you were here then, when I, when I mentioned that before the meeting. But uh, um, tried to get some federal help for us and just kind of fell on deaf ears, so.
Yeah.
I think maybe uh, well, I don't want to speak politics, but maybe, maybe we may be able to get some ears opened now. You never know.
That's, it's worth a try. It's worth a try. Thanks, Ray.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
With that, I will leave. Thank you, people.
All right, thanks, Ray. Other comments tonight from the public? Okay, not seeing any takers. So uh, Ryan, is there a report uh from the board tonight?
Yes, uh, as you probably saw, the board did approve the final reading of the ordinance that. Uh, ended the DDA. Uh, so that, that's complete. Karen mentioned the funding piece. The intention is to keep that funding uh in that region. And I love her idea to get that started with the park. Uh, so that has, hopefully we can. We can move on from that at this point. Uh, I'm sure you all saw some of these announcements from Karen and other township members. Uh, the beach is shut down at Park Lake uh due to E coli. That's um troublesome. I've seen lots of people out there still as I've driven by, uh, but we've got signage up there and all the things that we need to, to communicate that there may be a danger. Hopefully that won't last too much longer, although it doesn't seem like we have an end in sight unless Karen and Nick have uh new news on that. Uh, the board heard uh just some description of the landscape ordinance at the last meeting. Uh, so that will be moved to action. The board seemed open to that and ready to, to make a move on that. So at our next regular meeting, I believe that should be up for first reading. Uh, and then we just got word that the county extended the state of emergency for another month. Which means that Township Board and Township Committees will still be meeting via Zoom for the month of July. But it sounds like that's very temporary until the end of the month and then we should expect to be back in person in August. The board also decided not to meet on July fifth uh due to the holidays, so there will be only one meeting in. July for the board. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, so then last but not least for tonight, any uh planning commissioner comments before we adjourn? I have one, just that I will not be able to attend the next meeting. Um, I uh, I thought maybe I could attend remotely. And it looks like I would have that opportunity, but I do plan to be on a remote trail in the Pacific Northwest without cell coverage, internet coverage, any kind of coverage. So I don't think it's possible. George, you had your hand up.
I assume when you're not here, Dan. I just uh, I just wanted to thank John for catching the well. Um, with the, with the uh, storage facility there. I didn't think about that and I, I appreciate uh experience that's on this board and the leadership here. And I just wanted to thank you for catching that and uh, for the shared drive uh input on the other development. That was very interesting to me, very insightful, and thank you for catching that. And then Nick. And then Nick, thanks for, ahead of the CIP project, you gave a little FS, free talk and I appreciate that information. That was helpful to me. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Other comments from commissioners? All right, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to make the motion to adjourn.
You have support? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening. We'll see you next time.